This regular meeting of the Marshall Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present and that this meeting has been called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is here. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the MISD Board of Trustees, we are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievements, set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions; that is the responsibility of the superintendent. This is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public. You are our guests and you are welcome to observe and listen. If you wish to address the board and the public comment portion of the agenda, please fill out the public comment form found on the back table and return the completed form to the superintendent's secretary. We are pleased that you have taken the time to join us this evening and we thank you for your interest in Marshall Independent School District. Someone open us in prayer, please?
I will. Let us pray, please. Loving and gracious God, we thank you for this day, for we realize, dear Master, that you are indeed the giver of all good gifts and we just thank you right now for all your blessings. Thank you, Lord, for the successful outcomes of our school events and for all of our staff members, both the teaching and support members. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, courage, and strength. Please, God, be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those that have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. God, and loving God, as we come to the end of this academic year, we look back with joy on all of the accomplishments that we have achieved. We look back and acknowledge losses that have been moments of mourning and remembrance. We look back with some relief on all of the challenges that we have had to undertake. We look upon the faces of our students whom we have taught, supported, and guided throughout this semester. Lord, we look upon the faces of our colleagues with work that they have brought to us. We look upon the faces of our retirees, whose legacies will be remembered. And heavenly Father, we look upon your face and see your loving countenance looking right back at us. In celebration of this past year, dear Lord, we thank you for our students, our administrators, our staff, all who have contributed to support the important work of the Marshall Independent School District. May all this bear fruit to make this world a better place. It is in the precious name of Jesus I ask it all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will now have our pledges, starting with the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, Ms. Scott, do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay, moving along to administrative reports. The first item is the MISD District Teachers of the Year.
We have a district achievement.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, I skipped over that. I'm focused. District achievement. Can all blend it in. Let's do that first.
All right. The first group of students, we have several here tonight, very excited that you all are here. The first group of students that we want to recognize, if you are here, are our students who actually went and participated in the State UIL contest. First of all, we have issues and current events. One of these students, if you're here, Emily Hill. At least Emily's here for a couple of things. Skylar Smith. Skyler. Vanute Gomage, is he, oh, is he here? Yay! I heard about Bill here. Walt Trulow, are you here? Great. All right. First of all, I want to talk about these four. We, if you have not heard anything about them here at Marshall Texas, you've been hiding under a rock. Come up because this group of students went to State for, let me make sure, is it issues and current event? Current issues and events. Okay. I said that wrong the whole time. They placed second in State and so we're here. And I believe I looked up today, I think we have 5,038 high schools in the state of Texas in this group. So, second in State. So, we're about here. Also, Emily placed individually fifth and Walt placed individually sixth. Is that correct? Okay. And so, very proud of them. And just as a little token, and I want to give these to you, this is an achievement medal from Marshall ISD and you can't sell it. It's not worth it. But I just wanted to make sure that y'all have a little token from MISD so that you would always know how very proud you all made us. So, thank you very much.
It's not just me. Squish in. All right, you go first.
Amen.
Jess, did you get them?
I will. I was gonna let everybody get there. If y'all don't win the picture, y'all just gonna blow.
Good job, guys.
Teri Johnson here.
Yes.
I thought you were dancing on Maverick Drive yesterday. I saw that the other day. But Teri, also, UIL Athletics, went to State and we were very excited and she placed sixth in this group. Well, everybody I've talked to said that she did a fantastic job and also showed so much class there with the other people that were participating. So, thank you for representing Marshall so well.
Beautiful.
Way to go.
Who was your sponsor? Your sponsor? The person that went with them?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. For UIL, it was Ms. Lopez and Ms., where are y'all?
James.
Ms. James. There they are. There they are.
Coach.
Yeah.
Correct?
There he is.
Thank you. Congratulations. Very proud of y'all.
Way to represent.
Okay, now moving on to administrative reports. Item one is the MISD District Teachers of the Year. Ms. Croomes has that.
This is very, very exciting to be able to do this. I'm gonna give these to Dr. Langley. Got my job. Little bubble wrap. There we go. All right. So, our District Teachers of the Year, they had to fill out, we had every campus selected a teacher, a campus teacher of the year. From those campus teachers of the year with their applications that are very lengthy that they had to fill out, we had a committee who reviewed their applications and scored it with a rubric and these two applicants rose to the top and they were selected to be our District Teachers of the Year. So, I'm gonna read their bio, which will be submitted to Region Seven Education Service Center to go to the next level. And then I'm gonna read just a little tiny excerpt of one of the five questions that are not easy questions, they're very thoughtful, count-consuming questions that they have to think about. So, our first Elementary Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Rachel Crown is a kindergarten teacher at Prostee Young Elementary. Y'all kiss, take pictures. I'll just keep reading. Yeah, yeah, yeah. She also earned her Master's in Education Leadership with Principal Certification from ETBU. Miss Crown received Teacher of the Year in 1819 while she was teaching Head Start for Marshall ISD. She also served two years at PTY as Reading Language Arts Instructional Coach. Miss Crown strives to give students the most hands-on and memorable experiences during their foundational, so very important, years. She, I just put that in there. She strives to instill a love for learning in each student she has in her classroom. So, her principal did add something else to the little bio tonight, just speaking of how important and vital she is to the campus. During the STAR test, which was last week, one of her students began choking on a peppermint. Miss Crown looked into action, those are Mr. Langley's words. She performed the Heimlich maneuver on that student, saved the student, guided administrator, assessed the child, and resumed testing. So, just a little excerpt out of her question three, just goes with her bio. Question three is describe specific ways in which you deliberately connect your students with the community. Show how these community connections dissolve classroom walls and are used to impact student learning and success. So, very, very much thought questions. So, they had a sprouting knowledge grant that she wrote so that her students had the opportunity to grow things outside. So, this is at the bottom of her bio question. Once our gardens were put together, we invited community members to the school to see how their investment had impacted not only this set of students but many students in the future. The students made thank you boards for all the community members to show appreciation for their generous donations. Placks were placed on picnic tables for students to remember the generous community for years to come. Students are taking pride in their garden and making sure to keep it watered. They didn't just talk about it or see the pictures, they got to put their hands on it.
That's good. All right, now let's go down there for just a second.
Okay. Secondary. All right. Secondary is Marshall High Schools on Janet Duck or. Janet Duck, I'm sorry.
If any of the students that Roy talked to, if you need to go to the high school for another program, feel free to do that.
Janet Duck is a secondary mathematics teacher at Marshall High School in Marshall, Texas. Currently, Janet teaches pre-AP and regular Algebra II. She also serves as the head coach for the Lady Math Soccer Team and she works out at the gym in the morning, too. She graduated from ETBU with a degree in Mathematics Education and holds an Associate in Science degree from Western Oklahoma State College. Duck has been awarded the Coach of the Year for District 15, 5A, for 2020, Teacher of the Year for MHS, and Most Influential Teacher multiple times. Coach Duck devotes her time and effort in creating lessons that are not only aligned to the guidelines that are required by the state, but also engaging and captivate all learners. She strives to make learning as enjoyable and easy as possible for each student that she encounters every day. Mrs. Duck is someone that is eager to work hard and is constantly trying to improve her strategies and instruction. She doesn't settle for being proficient. When given a task or asked to do something that is out of her comfort zone, she rises to the challenge and is determined to make the best out of every situation. She takes every opportunity she is given to grow in her level of teaching by attending professional development sessions when the chance arises. She has been to a high schools that work conference, Avid Conference, and Events of Placement Conference, Gifted Intellis Conference, along with numerous other workshops. So, her question that I would like to read, just a little short excerpt, is question number one that says, "Describe a content lesson or unit that defines you as a teacher. How did you engage students of all backgrounds and abilities in the learning? Show how your deliberate instructional decisions create student learning and reveal your beliefs about teaching and learning." That's question one. So, this is the very last paragraph of her response to this. So, they were, she was trying to engage her students and she was using the Transformers and I think specifically Bumblebee in the Transformers that she was using. So, she was connecting her students and showing them how the Transformers changed along with the lines of the math. That's as deep as I'm gonna go with math. One of my beliefs about teaching is that the teacher is simply the facilitator and coordinator of the classroom and content. I believe that in order for a student to truly understand a subject, they must be able to apply the concept when the chance arises. I was able to witness this as my kids made posters configuring their own equations and graphs. These posters continue to hang on my wall for them to reference throughout the year. I also believe that learning math doesn't always require a paper and a writing utensil. Sometimes it means that we watch a clip from a movie or get on the floor with a group of peers and use markers to design something. It is in these moments that I watch my students grow. As they interact with their peers, they're able to learn just as much, if not more, than what I am able to teach them by myself using old teaching habits.
Right. And board members, will y'all come down and recognize our District Teachers of the Year? And from here, these applications will go on to Region Seven Education Service Center and they will be competing against all the other, gosh, there's like ninety-some-odd districts in that service center. So, come on down. Tell them congratulations.
Yes. They should be nice. Okay, moving along to item two. It's the recognition of the Marshall High School 2021-2022 Top Ten Students. Mr. Gregory.
Yeah.
He's back.
Thank you. First of all, I want to, on behalf of Marshall High School and our graduating class, say thank you for taking time to recognize the top ten this year. Really, what we're recognizing is four, maybe five, years of hard work, due diligence, and persistence sitting up here. So, as I call your name, top ten graduating seniors, stand there facing the trustees and then we're probably gonna do, once we're all done and everybody's standing, we'll probably do a bunch of pictures and paparazzi and all that and then probably do another conga line like you just saw. Stay up there, don't sit down. First of all, our number ten graduate, Mr. Kiatrick Mitchell, after high school. Go ahead. After high school, he plans on attending TSTC where he'll major in Computer Science. His favorite memory is talking with his friends at lunch. My favorite subject was lunch. Our number nine ranking senior, Mr. Travis Bister. He'll be attending University of Texas at Dallas where he'll major in Biochemistry and his favorite memory is serving as drum major for the Big Red Pride and conducting the band every Friday night. Mr. Travis Bister.
You get to come stand in front of us. There we go.
Our number eight ranked graduate, Ms. Michaela McCray. After high school, she plans on attending Prairie View A&amp;M where she'll major in Nursing. Her favorite memory is seeing the community's excitement after the first round playoff game. Ms. McCray. Our number seven ranked senior, Ms. Martha Gespar. She plans on attending Panola College to major in Accounting and Finance and her favorite memory is playing tennis for the first time. Ms. Martha Gespar. Our number six ranked senior, Ms. Angela Sanchez. After high school, she plans on attending Panola College to major in Pre-Nursing. Her favorite memory is being on the sidelines and getting to cheer on the Mavericks for all four years of football season. Ms. Angela Sanchez. Our number fifth ranked senior, Frank Buck Buchanan. After high school, he plans on attending Louisiana Tech University where he'll major in Engineering. His favorite memory is beating Brian Rutter to make it to the second round of the football playoff. Number four ranked senior, Ms. Emily Hill. Emily will be attending University of Texas where she'll major in Economics. Her favorite memory is going to State with the UIL team and specifically getting randomly interviewed by some random people right after the competition. Can't blame that, can you? Number three ranked senior, Jamie Patel. After high school, she will be attending University of Texas to major in Biology. Her favorite memory is sitting in the counselor's center with all her friends, either having in-depth conversation about anything and everything and ending with everyone laughing hysterically. Ms. Jamie Patel. Our salutatorian for the graduating class of 2022 is Ms. Skylar Smith. Skylar will be attending Texas A&amp;M University. There's a couple here. She'll be majoring in Animal Science. Her favorite memory is attending the FFA State Convention in Indianapolis her sophomore year. Ms. Skylar Smith. And the graduating class of 2022 valedictorian, Ms. Maggie Trulow. So, this is how you know Skylar's brave, she's sandwiched in between a bunch of long horses. After graduation, Maggie will also be attending University of Texas to major in Biology. Her favorite memory is getting to play softball with some of her best friends and all of the bus rides where they made up random games to make it go by fast. Valedictorian, Ms. Maggie Trulow. Here comes that conga line. Y'all stay right there. Go ahead. There's a little conga line. Sorry. Get the glare out of the way.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Very proud.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I will thank you.
Party's over.
Yeah.
Okay, moving along to item three. The Notice of Intent to Apply for the ESSA Consolidated Grant, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. Ms. Croomes, you got something on that?
This is just our notice of intent to apply for our Every Student Succeeds Act grant, So, Title I, II, Part A, Part D, IV, and, oh, I, II, III, IV, and Part 1D. So, the total amount that we will be receiving is 2.4 for Title I, Part A, $48,000. Title I, Part D, Title II, Part A, $277,000. Title IV, Part A, $149,000. And Title III, Part A, $96,000.
When would we know on that?
Pardon?
When would we know something on that?
Well, this is, our application is due June 30th, so we'll be working on getting that application submitted by then.
Gotcha.
Okay. Never do know.
Are these pieces of the previous ESsrs? I mean, is this like what's left over in those or is this new ESsrs?
No, sir. This is ESsus.
Oh, ESsus, sorry.
Every Student Succeeds.
Wrong S.
Yes. Yes. It has an A and not the ER.
I double-checked that before the meeting because I was. What's up?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Appreciate it. Okay, number four is superintendent's report. Dr. Langley?
Really, just a few reminders. We are giving, because everything's kind of been about high school most recently, but the Read to Ride Bicycles are going out this week and then next Monday to a few campuses. So, everybody watch on the streets. We're gonna have some new bicycle riders out there. Also, Wednesday afternoon at four, we'll be honoring our retirees, which is also very important to make sure that we honor those folks who have already, always done so much good work for our district. And we are waiting on the STAR scores. Testing has been wrapping up and Ms. Stevens has been getting all the information submitted and we're just waiting to see how we did. So, we'll let y'all know when we hear that.
Okay, great. Okay, moving along to the Consent Agenda Action Items. These are normal minutes and budget-related items. They're on there every month. I'm sure with those, we will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept those in the consent agenda.
Second. A motion by Ms. Marshall and a second by Mr. Huffins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. Matters requiring board discussion and action, this is the Board of Potential Reorganization of Board Officers for Board President, Vice President, Secretary, and Assistant Secretary. We could have a motion to leave those the same or we could have a motion to...
I move that we will, all officers will retain their positions.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Fisher for the current officers to remain in the current positions.
Second.
You have a second on that, Mr. Medina. So, that would be Board President, myself, Brad Burris, Board Vice President, Ms. Kathy Marshall, Board Secretary Ted Huffins, and Board Assistant Secretary Chase Palmer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. Moving on to the education, considering to approve the removal of Meg's charter designation.
Meg's is recognized in our ASHTED system as a charter school. When we submit reports through PMS, it has to be submitted as a dropout recovery school. So, in order for us to get everything aligned, we need to drop the charter designation for the charter school and then we will self-designate as an alternative education campus but still retaining the Marshall early graduation status of the campus.
So, it's just a change of our situation.
Label.
Yes, ma'am.
Labeling.
The campus, yes, the campus label.
We're not receiving any money.
No, sir. No, we've gone back two years and there's been no funds for charter.
All right. Do we have a motion for that?
Make the motion and approve.
And a second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer and a second by Ms. Fisher. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Huffines and a second by Ms. Marshall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. Item six is considering and approve adult meal prices for breakfast and lunch for TDA.
With eight days left, TDA has asked us to approve meal prices for our adults, breakfast and lunch. We've had some issues going back and forth with TDA on what they want submitted from us and they have requested that we have this approved this time. So, we have the adult meal calculator worksheet that we have, that they provided us and they have requested the agenda and the minutes that you guys approved our adult meal prices.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Palmer and a second by Mr. Huffines. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. All right, we will now adjourn into closed session. Do it Texas Government Code, Chapter 551-071 and Chapter 551-074.